And all that they do for us. We're just so blessed to live in a country where we can come together as a group and make decisions without any fear of our life or intervention that leads us astray from what your will is. We just thank you for all of this, and most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus. Amen.
Before we start celebrating all the young people in this room, I would like to have one more moment of silence. Earlier today, a very, very, very good friend of mine and someone that I think has given as much to the young people and the community of La Mesa, if anybody I ever know, Kurt Pierce passed away unexpectedly earlier today. I have never met anybody that didn't think highly of Kurt Pierce, and so I would just like everybody to bow and just have a moment of silence and just thank God that such a good man was put in our path to influence us. Okay, there's a lot of people here. Sorry.
No ma'am.
Good, sorry. We don't have a lot of meetings left before school's out, and what I would like to do and what the board would like to do is start recognizing students at every board meeting, but since we really only had two before summer, I squeezed all of elementary into tonight. And so, we're gonna start with South. What I would ask of you is Mr. Hanaway is gonna come up and kinda talk and introduce his young people, and then I'm gonna get the school board to take a picture with those young people, and then we're gonna do the same thing with North. I would love for the South people to stay while the North people went. Once all that's done, everybody can go home. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. But, with no further ado, Mr. Hanaway, come brag on some South Elementary employees and students. Ms. Watson, be more ready.
Good evening. Man, thanks for everybody for showing up. Such, so awesome to see so many people in this room. Real quick, principals report. As of today, we have 406 students at South, 82 at pre-K, 100 in Kinder, 108 in first, 98 in second. Had a really good couple of weeks. We had our big Easter egg hunts and egg drops on the 7th, and we had 12 community guests come and read to us on Dear Day, so that was a lot of fun for our students. Lots of great things going on at South, but I do want to kind of share the spotlight with our hard-working teachers and students. So, our UIL competition, we had Ms. Benton, Ms. G, Ms. Rodriguez, and Ms. Sitten and Ms. Maraz. If you guys would stand up real quick.
Or if you'd wave if you aren't standing.
Yeah, exactly. So, I just wanna say how much I appreciate the hard work that these teachers put in with our students, after-school practices, pushing them, teaching them the things that they needed to know to be as successful as we were, and it was a great turnout for us at UIL. So, let's recognize some students. We'll start with music memory. Ms. Benton, will you come up here? Okay. All right, we'll start with Armani Contreras.
And once you're up here, stay up here. We're gonna clap for everybody. Yeah. There you go, man. Stay up here, Armani. Just come hang out with me.
Okay. Okay, Aleah Malkako. Aleah got first place in music memory. I was hoping to have a podium. Do you mind if I set this down?
Not a big one. Nice job.
Nice job.
Put that medal on.
And in sixth place, we have Tegan Pierce. Tegan Pierce.
Oh, she's in.
Okay.
She made six.
Okay, creative writing, Ms. G.
I'm behind you.
Hey. First place, Quinn Hatchet. Julian Hernandez.
He's got Julian. Like that hat, Florida State, baby. He knew what he was doing tonight.
And in fourth place, Riley Martin. Okay, next, we have storytelling with Ms. Rodriguez. Okay, in fifth place, Emmeline Brock. Got it? Second place, Jocelyn Northcott. And Rose Ruiz. Good job, Rose. All right, oral reading, we have Ms. Sitten. In sixth place, Aubrey Lozano. Annalisa Garza, fourth place. Okay, and our last event was spelling, that was Ms. Maraz. In first place, Quinn Hatchet. Got all the blame. Also in first place, Aubrey Lozano. And in fifth place, Ezra Rocha. There you are.
There you are, Ed.
All right.
Is that all of them?
That's it.
All right, get these guys around, do not move. Okay, and I apologize for doing this quiet, but if I could get board members to come over, I would like a picture, and parents, this is your time, South parents, don't steal their seat. Get up, and if the board members would get here, let's get a picture of all these guys, then we'll do North. All right? Awesome. Parents, y'all can vote to get, surely nobody will really steal their seats.
Better find some short kids to stop.
I'll get that off the boat.
Oh, did y'all move anything?
Anna, give us a count.
One, two, three. All right.
One?
I forgot.
Who cares?
Great job, South. All right, if the South group will stay for the North group, and then we'll let everybody get out now.
How are you?
Hopefully, you're close to the hand away was.
I was close, I just couldn't get through.
I think it's great.
At North, we've had a lot of fun stuff going on. We also just completed the reading star, and so we'll finish with our star test in two weeks, and then we'll have all of our other fun things going on. If my UIL coaches will actually just go ahead and come up here, I'm gonna read them off. We had Ms. Vargallo with number sense, Ms. Mendez chess, Ms. Trejo art, Ms. Crutchard oral reading, Ms. Kark storytelling and spelling, Ms. Arguiho math graph charts, Ms. Benitez listening, Ms. Agiri dictionary, Ms. Garfield music memory, and Ms. Baron ready writing. And so, we will start here.
Good job, people.
Okay, so, we're gonna do chess first, and third grade, fourth place was Aiden Scott. Fifth grade, fifth place chess was Zaden Delgado. Okay, ready writing, in third grade, we have fifth place Noel Gonzalez. Fourth grade, third place Kai Kai Mancius. And also in fourth grade, sixth place Natalie Peralis. Fifth grade and ready writing, fourth place Angelina Morales. Okay, oral reading, third grade, we have sixth place Andrea Alivo. Fifth place, Nellie Agiri. Fourth grade and ready writing, fourth place Angelina Morales. Okay, oral reading, third grade, we have sixth place Andrea Alivo. Fifth place Nellie Agiri. And second place Anaya Wesley. Fourth grade oral reading, third place Kai Kai Mancius. Fifth grade oral reading, sixth place Raven Reese. Okay, spelling, third grade, spelling, sixth place Eliana Iglesias. And fifth place Antonio Caramillo. Fourth grade, spelling, sixth place Kaylee Mojica. Fifth grade, sixth place Victoria Zuniga. And first place Evander Solis. Storytelling, third grade, fifth place, we had Ariella Jones. And fourth place, Anaya Wesley. Fourth grade art memory, we have fifth place Harmony Moreno. Fifth grade, second place Lily Morales. And first place Janelle Vargallo. Okay, fifth grade dictionary skills, we have fifth place Lily Morales. Fourth place Michaela Sanchez. And second place Piper Baker. And fifth grade listening, sixth place, we have Jeremy Vasquez. Fourth place Kenley Hanaway. And third place Adam Ontavettos. And that's it for North.
Good. Big hat for North. All right, love the girl, let's go. Parents, this is your chance, and you can't steal their seat now, because everybody can leave after this one. But, parents, thank you for allowing us to be around your children. This is what it's all about, so thank y'all for being here. This is awesome. We're gonna have to squeeze a little bit, I think. We're gonna have to squeeze a little bit. Families, y'all are welcome to stay, but if you do wanna leave now, now's your opportunity. Thank y'all so much.
Good job, Kenley.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
I will do it, if he's not in my superintendent report, I'll do it, I'll just do it, and I'll get the...
I can teach it to you.
Yeah, we did that pretty quick, for the amount of kids that were...
Hi, Joyce.
And the vice president together.
Oh, there's, there's his son, that's good. So, he's gotta be coming. Maybe he's just, there's so many cars out there. My Ezra, my Auburn, my Lucas, my Rocha.
Get him, get him.
The fastest was like an hour and five, because Luke traveled, like.
I went to the house yesterday. They live, it's Juniper, whatever neighborhood that is over there. What she told me was that he worked in the yard all day yesterday. He has asthma, but last night he went to bed, nothing, woke up and his left leg was hurting really bad, and they tried to put some Bengay and stuff on him, and he finally told mom, told his wife, said, "I'm gonna go lay on the couch," this was this morning. So, he went laid on the couch, and she said she checked on him 10 minutes later, and he felt that he was cold, so she called nine one immediately, and he got up and went to the restroom and collapsed. It was a heart attack. Crazy. But, yeah, I went by there before, before. As healthy as a guy is out there, about that been around. I mean, that's scary. Puts things in a very good perspective, and you just never know.
You never know.
You never know. Good man.
Okay, I guess we'll go to the consent agenda items now.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Guess now we'll do the financial report with Mr. Ron.
Hello, board. Nice to see you. I'm gonna start off with the general fund by function, the first page, and touch on just a couple of areas. The first one would be the student transportation, function 34. You can see that it's over budget. We're gonna wait till the end of the year to do the budget amendment, and most of that's caused by an increase in fuel costs and just general economic conditions, supplies, et cetera, most of that, most of that is going up.
But, it also, and I don't mean to interrupt, but it also means we got a lot of kids going to the playoffs and doing extra things, so that if we're gonna have something over, that's a good thing to be over.
Yes, athletes, that's correct, athletes. So, anyway, we'll do the budget amendment as we get through the rest of the school year, or after we get through the rest of the school year. The other area is the community service. You'll see in the second column that there's a minus amount of $940.77. This is attributed to the food bank, it's a reimbursement amount, it'll catch up, we get the reimbursement, it'll catch up in the next cycle. It's just, it just circumstances throws it into the negative side. And that's really all I have, that's the only thing that's unusual. We're in our seventh, seventh month out of 12 months, and we have about one month left at school, so some of these percentages will adjust accordingly when school is out, and most of them will. Some of them that have instructional training, they've already paid for, that's already in the budget, so you should see a drop in most everything except probably maintenance and transportation. They do some repairs in transportation, and of course, a lot of cleaning and fixing in the summertime. The next report, oh, I'm sorry, anybody have any questions?
No.
So, I think, I think I have one question, but I asked Preach and you answered.
Well, there's two earnest that I wanted to show you. The one you talked about on page nine was that repair gym scoreboard.
Yeah.
That is the high school, not the new gym, that was the controller in the old high school gym that we still use. And then, if you look at page before that earnest and everybody else, page eight, there was another one I wanted to make sure we understood on right in the middle, check 63719, it says football stadium repair and maintenance on video board, and I got the receipt over here. The 20250 was for the football scoreboard, the video board's under warranty. They just came and worked on it, so it's listed, but we were not charged.
Okay. I'll move on to the revenue report, the revenue year-to-date report. We'll get to the cash, the check register in just a second. The revenue year-to-date report, the only point that I would make there is that the federal funds, you know, we haven't been able to draw down funds, well, we've reconciled through March, so Tuesday, we're having a meeting with Region 20, they have some program specialists that are coming out, and most likely, we'll be doing drawdowns on our federal funds and improve our cash on Monday or Tuesday. I take it back, coming out Tuesday, we'll draw down either Tuesday or Wednesday, hopefully, if everything looks good.
So, we say drawdowns, what do you mean by drawdowns?
Oh, money against, it's reimbursement or money against our federal programs. We have quite a few federal programs, and well, they haven't been, we haven't been, circumstances has allowed... Caused by the change in leadership over here. Yes, we got, we got behind. We're about to catch back. Yes, we got behind, but this'll catch us up through March here. We're reconciling, everything is ready to go, we just need to have them come out, we want a view from them, an observation from them, and look and make sure everything is okay. Our accounting department says it looks really good, so we think we'll be drawing down money for cash flow. Next report is the monthly capital outlay. The only point on this report that's important is the $93,000 that we spent in the kitchen area. We bought something for South and something for North, we have the invoices on those, of course, if you have any, but that was part of a grant program through the Texas Department of Agriculture, and we filed a report last week to reclaim $70,000, $73,000, so that'll come back to us. So, a net cost for these, all this equipment was about $20,000, $21,000.
So, we initially paid for it, and then...
Reimbursement, it was a reimbursement program, that's how it was styled through the Texas Department. We, that's the way we had to do it. We had to apply for the grant, qualify for the grant, improve for the grant, and then spend the money, and then get reimbursed for it. The next page is another reference to the monthly capital outlay, and it just references it through the fund, General Operator Cafeteria Fund, Capital Projects Fund. Our next page is the monthly check register, and I went through this and circled items. I'm hoping what we can do is that y'all have had an opportunity to go through and look at what you might have questions on, and ask questions, and I'll do my best to answer the questions. Or observations, just any general observations, whatever you prefer.
I'm good. I'm good.
One thing I was gonna ask while ago, um, I mean, you said we were seven months, seven months in, right?
Seven months in.
So, we should be running about sixty, sixty, sixty-five.
About sixty, about sixty percent.
I mean, looking at all those, all those amounts, and I know I'm going back to that schedule, you already...
Well, that's all right. That's okay.
Uh, but I mean, looking at that, I mean, they're all in line.
Thank you. Yeah, they, they seem to be, you know, the thing is, we spend for eight, eight months, eight and a half months, we spend money, uh, specifically for particular programs, and then the last three months, it falls off. So, if it's, you know, you think, well, we're at seven, seven-twelve, so that's fifty-eight percent, uh, why aren't the numbers at fifty-eight percent? Well, it's because the last three months of this budget are, is summer. And, and really, the only two areas you see money being spent is in transportation, getting ready, getting their buses ready, and in repairs and maintenance, cleaning the campus up, and, uh, you know, they do a lot of floor work. Uh, we'll, we'll see them come in, so. And so, we'll just pull, we'll pull for the transportation. We'll wait close to the end of the year and we'll do a budget amendment, just one-time budget amendment, because there's other things that will influence that, like, for example, the, uh, incumbent amount. Some of those are open POs and, and they'll close and there'll be a balancing. It'll come right back to us. So, we just wait and see how that is. So, it's not bad. It's not a bad thing. It's...
So, you don't, you don't foresee that we'd have more legitimate, it's just this one coming up?
Just from looking at the numbers, uh, we, we would have to exceed a hundred percent. If you go down and look at the numbers, some of them are close, but they're also not gonna have any money spent.
And I don't want it to be thought of as if we're gonna have to pull money on a fund balance or anything. It just means we may have an account that doesn't overspend and we move that to there. We think overall budget, we're still good.
But, I mean, that explains why, like, seventy-one and eighty-one debt service and then acquisition, uh, of assets, those, those two are already in the nineties, close to a hundred percent. But you're gonna make your debt payments and you've already...
Right. Yes, we're down.
Done spending capital.
Yes, good point. There are some that are finished and they're, and they're still not at a hundred percent, so we're gonna have some whippa.
But the rest of them, like I said, the rest of them are in that sixty to seventy percent range, so, I mean, to me, it's spot on.
Yes, we're still good. Yes, we're still. Thank you. Thank you for that observation. So, just a couple of things that, that's happened in the office this past, past week is, uh, that we, uh, we completed, and of course, the report for the seventy-two thousand dollars. We're starting primary work on the, preliminary work on the food service renewal contract pending the board's approval. And that, that process is, uh, is a renewal contract. It's not, it's not a new contract. It's a renewal contract. This, uh, we'll start our budget meetings, uh, with the faculty and staff after start testing. We're getting real close to that. I'll, I'm gonna start work on the template tomorrow and bring it up today, uh, for, for revenue and see how we look now. And, uh, and then I'll go, like I said, I'll be going to the campuses to work with individuals to start on the budget prep. And also, the payroll department has pretty much wrapped up, uh, what they're gonna present for you guys. I think you're gonna see that tonight. And once that's done, we'll be able to use that data to put, to push over into our budget side. Those numbers will just come straight over to the budget side, so. And that's ninety percent of your budget, so as far as I'm concerned, we're, we're ten, ten percent away after we push those numbers over into, uh, into budget, so, uh, we're getting close. Meetings, we haven't talked much about. I'll get with, with, uh, Mr. Richie on when we wanna meet, board meetings, and have a little discussion about how, what y'all would like to see.
We'll, we'll start having budget workshops probably after the elections and rock and roll on that.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll want your feedback on what you would like to see, uh, along with our, our experience, and see if we can come up with a good way of, of not wasting your time in budget workshops. I think that's all that I have. Any questions?
Oh, thank you. You did an amazing job.
Actually, this is the hard part. Doing the work in the office is the easy part.
There you go. We'd like to hear that.
Hey, Ron, you're, you're, you're up on the next one too.
This is the blanket athletic and activity coverage and catastrophe coverage. I didn't pan out on this. Y'all should have a copy of this. I hate to go through all of this. I hate, I, I wrote a lot of notes only because I felt like it was important because of the nature of the policy. But if you look up at the top, you see HSR on the left and Texas Kids first on the right. We've been using Texas Kids first for several years. And, uh, I have had experience with HSR in the past, and one of the things that I was concerned with is the cost difference. Because I talked to, uh, Chris Norris, thank you, about it, and I said, "Please look at this and give me an apple to apple. Look at it and let me know what you think." And he said, "Well, Ron, there's no point in spending thirty thousand dollars to spend twenty-one thousand dollars, because the policies do compare well enough." Uh, the, uh, and, and if you look at the cost per student, it's fifteen, thirty-five, and, and the other one is twenty-two, forty-seven. And when they came and made their first offer, it was thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I got them down eight thousand dollars, but it still did not... The comparison between the two was not good enough to make a decision to spend more money. Uh, there was two areas of concern. One of them was the, uh, uh, the way that they processed. HSR processes electronically. When you, when you have an accident, they're gonna file a report immediately. Texas Kids, and you, and you get a claim number immediately, just within seconds, once you keystroke it in. But for Texas Kids, you fill out a paper, you send it home to the parents.
Man may not get it back.
Our liability stops right when we, since he hits that send button electronically. Our liability doesn't stop when, until we get it back from the parents. The timelines that are involved, you have, you've got ninety days with, uh, Texas Kids to get it there and get, get it back, and also have it processed for personal insurance. So, there were a lot of reasons, uh, a lot of reasons why, uh, one of the, why we should go with HSR. But that was primary. One of the other ones that we, uh, had a challenge with was, uh, Texas Kids touts a, uh, network. And HSR says, "Use whoever you want." Well, when I looked at the network and who was in the network, Lamisa had nobody in the network. So, there's no benefit for us to have a network unless we go to Lubbock to do it. Uh, we're a big enough community that we have our own resource. A lot of people that use Texas Kids don't have the resources, medical resources, so we don't fit their profile. So, anyway, I also talked to the trainer and he said he didn't like doing the paperwork because of the process of getting it back. So, so, and, and I get it, you know, it's just a pain for him, so. He, he liked it, uh, and he's gonna be point for this. So, uh, I would recommend that we go with HSR.
Just discuss.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, for the record, the last, the consent agenda items was actually five, the vote was five to zero. And also, for the record, Trey Moneda joined the meeting at six-thirty P.M. Someone make a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Dr. Griffin, discussion on the DCE local policy.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Mr. Richie, my colleagues. As we all know, uh, our business is to educate kids, keep them safe and educate them, and one of the most important tasks in doing that is hiring the right people and then developing people from there so they, they can be more effective. And unfortunately, uh, allowing people who haven't developed and aren't the best for our kids to move to another, you know, another location. So, part of that starts tonight with contract renewals. In the future, what we would like to do is make sure that we do a lot of due diligence before we bring contract renewals to you guys. Uh, work with the employees at the beginning of the year, let them know what the expectations are, develop them throughout the year, and then bring to you those that are showing promise that they're either delivering or they're capable of delivering. So, uh, there'll be three items tonight on your action items that we're gonna ask you to vote in favor of. The first, uh, is to pass a new policy. That's policy DCE local. That's agenda item D-six. And that policy, what it does, it enables the district to use what's called a non-certified contract. Technically, it's called a non-chapter-twenty-one contract, but TE, uh, ESPEC looks at it as a, I'm sorry, not ESPEC. TASB looks at it as a non-certified contract. It's utilized for people whose jobs don't require TE, a teacher, administrator, counselor, those kinds of certification. That's one item we're gonna ask you, uh, to approve. Now, I'll admit, we have had some, we have had teachers on a non-certified contract, not teachers. We've had employees on non-certified contracts for, uh, a number of years, and I'm assuming there was probably a verbal agreement that it was okay, which is fine. You guys can give those kind of verbal agreements and we can act upon those, but I think it's best to put it in policy. And so, if you pass DCE local, it will match DCE legal and give us the authority to issue those contracts. Now...
How long do they have to get their certification?
So, what I'm doing is, uh, I'm visiting with every employee who is not certified, who, who is in a position that should be certified. And then I'm also visiting with the employees who are in non-contract status, non, sorry, non-certified status, who could lead to certification. The best example of that is our facilitators. Uh, we want our facilitators who are degreed to take a look at what they need in order to become certified teachers. And then, uh, a deficiency plan, Mr. Richie and I have, uh, put something in place where I have a conversation with them. I detail where they are, what they need to do to become certified, and then I monitor them throughout the year, offer support. I, I contact their agency, whether they're UTPB, we have several in UTPB, Texas Tech, Texas Teachers of Tomorrow, different agencies. And so, I'll be working with them to try to get as many certified as possible. When you have somebody certified with like, uh, let's say, uh, an emergency certification, you can move them to a teacher certification. If it happens in the middle of the year, it's a little more tricky, so I'm looking at all of those as well, the emergency certifications and the intern certifications, because when they, when they expire, and they're only for one year, you have to do something else if you're not fully certified to continue in the role. So, that's kinda what I'm navigating right now. I'm doing, what I'm thinking of is really an employee audit of every employee's, uh, certification. I'm at the early stages of it. Unfortunately, we can't wait any longer to give out contracts. The good thing for you is this, that contract gives the employee peace of mind, but it doesn't guarantee them anything if they don't do their part as it relates to certification and the other things. So, it does give them peace of mind. You guys would know and approve, hopefully, a list of people who would get those, uh, non-certified contracts. And once you approve it, they will issue those, but they're just like a teacher, uh, contract, except at the end of the year, they expire. You don't have to, uh, not renew it if you're not happy with them. You don't have to terminate it if you're not happy with them. You can simply let it expire and they can do something else in the district, or they can move on. And that's what I like about the non-certified contract. Uh, for people who don't have teacher certification, like, we're gonna hopefully hire an LSSP, a licensed school, a specialist in school psychology. People with licenses, uh, by the state or any other, uh, government entity, they can get a chapter-twenty-one contract. They qualify because of their state license. But other positions, like our, uh, social emotional specialist, they don't qualify for one, so we would give them a, uh, the non-certified contract. So, that's kinda why we're presenting that to you tonight.
On the non-certify that you said you were gonna have a conversation, is there a timeline for that or is it just on their own?
For the conversation?
No.
No, no, for the certification.
That's what we're talking about.
So, when I meet with this kinda individual, case by case, I've met with five so far, and each one is different. Uh, I've met with one today who will, when their emergency, uh, permit expires in, on August thirty-first, they, they don't have to have their certification yet because they'll enter an internship. So, they'll go from the emergency permit, I believe, and I'm, I've reached out to their, uh, certified agency today. I believe they'll, might be able to go from the emergency permit this year to an intern, uh, permit next year, because that's when they will be getting monitored by, uh, student-teacher monitors. They're basically doing student teaching while active, and so, they might go from an emergency to an intern. I want them to have something, and that's what I'm meeting with them, to get them to something. Some on emergency permit, all they have to do is pass one or two tests with ESPEC, State Board of Educated Certification, and then they qualify for the standard permit. So, it's a case-by-case basis.
So, we're just making sure they're consistent and working towards...
Yes, ma'am. I'm, 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 I'm trying to help define the, the path and then trying to increase the sense of urgency enough so that they work on it. Sometimes when you don't monitor it, people get sometimes complacent, and they may not work on it as hard or as much as they could, and then they ultimately don't get it. So, that's all I'm trying to do. I'm, I'm definitely trying to give them peace of mind, and I think these contracts help with that peace of mind where they can relax and say, they're not trying to get rid of me at the end of the year, so they can relax, teach the kids in March, April and May, and move forward. In the future, we'd like to do certified contracts in either February or March. It could be different depending on circumstances, but February or March. And then we would do the, the other letters of reasonable assurance. That's for everybody. Custodians, bus drivers, no matter what your role is, if you're not on a term contract, if you're not on a probationary contract, or you're not on a non-certified contract, you will get a letter of reasonable assurance the following month. And that's what we wanna do in the future.
In, in, in a nutshell, we're doing a lot of stuff that hadn't been done in a long time. And what he's doing is a lot of cleanup, and then we'll get this thing in the right direction.
We're, we're still adjusting ventilation, correct?
What's that? Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Till twenty-seventh, I think, is when that start. We had to renew it again.
It's active. So, that's pretty much in a nutshell what I really wanted to explain to you guys. So, the first step would be approving the policy, if you will. The second step would be approving a list of people who are eligible for a non-certified contract. So, I just can't go out and I see a custodian I like and I wanna give him a non-certified contract. Can't do it. You give me the list of who I can approve. And then approve the, uh, the list that we have, but in doing that, sometimes between the time I publish the list, I discover errors that I might have made, people resign, things like that, where you have a list with more people on it than we need to actually approve. And that's the case tonight. So, what I'm giving you guys is what we call an exclusion list. And I have a sample, if you approve it and you wanna use this, I have a sample, sample motion. And you would basically move to approve the list minus those on the exclusion list, so we don't approve a contract for someone who either shouldn't have it, I didn't give you one. I'm so sorry.
That's dirty. That's dirty.
Charge it to my head, my car. Uh, but, uh, people who we should not approve because, and the reasons are listed to the side. You can see the reasons by each person. This is not a list we wanna read out loud or anything like that. I have not been able to visit with all of these people. I will visit with some, but, uh, to explain to them why, most of them understand, but, uh, that's the exclusion list. So, motion would basically, I'm sorry.
And it does not mean they're not working with Lamisa. That means they don't qualify for this specific contract.
They would all get Laura's.
Yes.
A letter of reasonable assurance is what would happen. Also, I'll say this before I ask you what questions you have. Uh, we likely will have people that we will bring to you in May and possibly even June who became qualified and need a contract, or I forgot, couldn't find them, didn't find them. It's not unusual to bring one or two or ten, depending on, you know, what we find, to you to approve their contracts in the months leading up to, uh, the, the start of the school year.
And we're still on a, kinda the same, except for now, we're still going job fairs. I mean, there's a lot. We're still kinda wrapping up this year and then we're gonna kinda move to what we need for next year. Like, we have a job fair on Saturday, right Frankie? So, uh, there'll still be some more of this, like Dr. Nelson says, coming, coming our way.
What I'd like to do, I haven't had a chance, Mr. Richie's been so busy, we've been so busy. Uh, I'd like to, every month, you know, superintendent has the authority. You've given them authority to hire people for professional positions. I would like to bring to you a, basically, a personnel report that shows who all was hired in the last month, what their capacity. And so, I will start that with, after you approve any next month, any that are existing employees, I'll start to bring new employees on a monthly personnel report, so you can see everybody that was hired, uh, for positions that you might desire, like principals. We would introduce them. We would talk about a brief explanation of their experience, what they bring to the table. And that, that's one of the processes I would like to implement with his permission.
Hundred percent.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, guys.
I guess we'll go to administrative reports. First one is reading of the documented board education hours. Uh, from this here, and it has, um, Trey Moneda has three hours. I have fifteen hours. Ron Mann seventeen and a quarter hours. David Wilson and a half hours. Cindy Martinez, three hours. Ernest Ojeda, seven, uh, seventeen and three-quarter hours, and Kevin, three hours. That's just informational. Uh, I guess we'll go to superintendent report.
Oh, before I start on the actual report, I have something to present to you, Trey. You know, them kids were here... Um, you know, the kids were here and I love joking around with kids and all that. But I have a very serious side and this, what you guys do is very serious and very important. And I hope y'all have always thought that I, as a person that sat back there behind where Ms. Ranford's at and as a superintendent, expressed that to you, the respect, the time. And I know this is your last meeting. Um, you're a Lamisa guy. Uh, you, you, you were on this board and you did a lot of good for a lot of people in the time you were here. Um, so we're, we're, this is from us, you know? This is from me, Frankie made it and helped order it. But it is from Lamisa ISD to just tell you that we appreciate the service you put. And that's why your family's here. So you can get a tip. And I just, I don't know if it's ever been done, but you guys deserve to be recognized for the service you provide. And thank you. For, for a little bit. I got, I got a lot going on right now.
I know.
We appreciate everything.
Aren't you gonna go?
Yes.
Where are you going?
I thought my mom was getting something. Thank you, Trey, very much. All right, as I get going, construction and building update. So we're really down to the nitty gritty. The library, there's still a few small punch list items we've got to finish, but it is ready for occupancy. Uh, I would love to take you guys over if you have time to come see it. It is, uh, especially for some reason, that bottom floor, I can just see a whole lot of, a lot of, uh, I visualize a lot of good meetings and things happening down there. The lift works, uh, Nelson and I wrote it. We also, and I, he told me not to say nothing, he see? We also, we also got stuck on it. But that was user error, the lift is fine, that was us. Nelson got a little claustrophobic.
I guess you're to blame.
In all honesty, Mr. McBe and I got stuck on it first. No, it was Richard and I, Richard and I got stuck on it first.
The architect, yeah.
And I was not smart enough and I got back on it with him and got stuck again.
But I really do encourage you to go, what we have left there is miniscule. I mean, it's, we won't, it's ready for occupancy, but we're gonna, we're gonna take our time making everything nice before we really take it over. I'm thinking next school year, it'll be fully operational, that's the goal. And then, um, there are, and we talked about this earlier, a few cosmetic issues outside. Now the library looks so nice, what was around it that didn't get affected, probably we, we need to kind of, just a few paint jobs and things, we just need to make it all look, absolutely. Uh, and then over at the gym, the really, the last big thing we, we've got, the lights. And I don't know the last time you guys were in there, but the lights, uh, to the gymnasium, not the lights around, but the two big, the, the two big rows of lights in the gymnasium are still not programmed for the light switches. And, uh, Matt from Independent Electric is coming out next week to program. You can turn them on from the wall panels, but to turn them off, you still have to go back to the burger box. Uh, and it's a complicated lighting deal where you can put them at different levels, you know, it's all the new technology. He's coming next week to program that and train people on how to work it.
Yeah, cause they told, he told me that we could, uh, like change the color of the light.
Outside, yes, not in the gym, outside, there's gonna be.
He said in the gym.
I, I think what he, outside, we can make it blue, red, gold, uh, for different things. And maybe you can inside, that, I wouldn't know that, that would be great.
I think he did, he, he mentioned that whenever we went on our.
You know, you see a lot of football stadiums now with these LED lights. Y'all remember the old gym, you had to turn them on and they'd 15 minutes to warm up. These now, they go on and off immediately. And a lot of football, uh, stadiums, especially college now, have colored LED lights when they score touchdown. They're blinking red and white, red and white, you know, it, it is pretty cool. So if we do have that, I will have some fun with that during basketball. Coach Moore will get very upset with you. But after that, the gym's pretty much ready to rock and roll. Questions on either one?
Well, not that, but what about the landscaping, do we, have we?
That's a hundred percent on us and we've got some plans. If y'all will drive by there, we experimented, cause we have some rock, uh, left over from a past project. Now, if you drive by guys, there is a lot of spaces we gotta cover. So we, we put some down and I think it looks okay, but we would need more. So we, we quoted it and it was way more than I want to spend. We quoted what we would need extra if we used what we had. So we, we decided, let's get through STAR test and let's, let's look at all options. Um, cause I, I would like it to look nice. I would also like to not put extra maintenance on people. We don't need to be mowing those little things all year, all the time. So if we get something that just stays and looks good all the time, that would be my preference. But, uh, we, what was the quote that he came back?
Seventy plus thousand.
Yeah, which? Give me a flatbed and I can go steal you some rock. Oh, way, way cheaper than that. But we, we're not just gonna, we're not gonna just halfway do it. Whatever we decide to do, we're gonna make, make sure it's lasting and looks good. That building looks too nice to not finish off the edge of it. Any more questions on construction? Okay, um, legislative overview, guys, and I'm gonna try really hard to not get long-winded on this, but there's some really important things happening in the legislature. The first one, uh, is our safety and security. And there's a senate bill called Senate Bill 11 that has had the most traction that would, um, first thing it does is it gives a little extra funding, uh, 15,000 per school. Now that, that sounds like a lot, but it's, it's not when it, when it comes to that. But it also does something that we're kind of ahead of the game. It, it requires schools to have an active shooter, not just, um, plant, but an active school, active shooter trained. You know, but we're ahead of that. And I was gonna tell you, Chief and I talked today and wrote on August 10th. You know, we have that week before school, that's teacher interns. August 10th, we're keeping the afternoon clear, cause you get hired companies to come in and do an active shooter drill for you, right? And I was talking to Chief and I told him, why would we do that? Because those people aren't gonna be here if we ever have an active shooter. So Chief is, we're gonna get his SWAT team, we're gonna get our ambulances, we're gonna get his police. And we're gonna, we're gonna do it in the afternoon of August 10th. And it'll be a traumatic experience, I'm, I'm telling you for our people. So we're gonna meet beforehand, then we're gonna leave there, and they don't know this, this is news to them too. But we're going to, uh, we're gonna have a full-blown active shooter drill on all four campuses, plus all the way to reunification. So that we, if it ever happens to staff on, and, and community, we know what we're doing.
Will we also either not then, but maybe at another time include like the highway, I mean the?
We're include, on, on that end, we're including everybody. We're including neighboring towns. Now, I thought you were gonna ask about students and the answer is yes, but I want the staff to do it first. Uh, some of my friends have done it with their students, but they made sure they did it one time with the staff. So the staff can then train the, the students instead of everybody trying to figure out all at once. I think it's gonna be a really powerful day for us that if God, you know, I hope it never happens, but if it does, I think we will thank our lucky stars that, that we did it. Uh, there's a, a couple of other security bills. Uh, one of them asks that you have to have an armed security guard on each campus, which we now have that, cause we now have one at South, so we are fully staffed there. Another one, uh, ups the safety allotment per student to a hundred dollars. Uh, it also provides $25,000 if you have a guardian program, which, uh, again, I tell y'all this all the time, we're a bit ahead of the game. Now go back to the one that may pass, cause this ties into something else. Okay, so I know y'all are kind of versed on that the truancy laws have really lightened since COVID for parents. Uh, and it's made it really hard on schools to hold parents and kids accountable for skipping school. Because there's really no teeth. We've had a better time with it this year because we have Vanessa Hernandez, who's doing attendance for the old district. She goes to court, she's busy, she files. But if you are a parent that just doesn't show up for court, there's really nothing that ever happens to you. Because if you come, you're gonna get community services a ticket, but if you never show, they may issue a warrant, but if they never find you, nothing ever happens to you. Well, the Uvalde shooter had a big record of truancy. And so this safety bill is also working back in some harsher penalties for truancy. That way, we at least are very aware of the kids that are on the risk of not being at school all the time in case we need to do home visits, which we are, again, ahead of the game, Vanessa's already doing that. But it's gonna put a little more teeth on the penalties that can come to parents and students on truancy, which I would like, which helps out a great deal. So that's that side. The, the voucher bill, I have spoke to you about this private school where they're trying to, um, this is, uh, the senate is passing what's called, and I've already told you, I'll be short, education savings account, where parents have the option to get $8,000 and send their kids to a private school. My fear when I talked to you last time was that we would have families try to homeschool. They have said you cannot homeschool. So you would have to go to a private school. So I don't really feel like that would be a killer for Lamisa, cause I don't know that we would have a lot of people take that, to go to private school. The reason that I've learned this, that the private school wants the money to go to this. They've never wanted state money. I've never understood this, why suddenly do they want state money? Because they don't want to have to be, they don't want the accountability that we have of STAR test. And if you take state money, you gotta be accountable. But if the parents get the state money, and then the parent's going and paying you, you're not taking state money. So these publics, these private schools would get the money without having to do any of the accountability. No strings attached for private schools. It's, it's a racket. And so I still hope it does not pass, cause it's not, it's, it's not a good deal, in my opinion. There is one, I also talked to y'all about some bills that are looking at teacher raises. Senate Bill 9 is the one that has the most traction right now. And it looks at a two to 4,000 pay raise for teachers across the state of Texas. Uh, and also the thing I like about it, cause Dr. Nelson and some of the other people in the room have really been trying to see how can we, how can we start a grow your own program that's bigger? How can we, teachers are so hard to find, how can we start raising our own teachers? You know, we already have an education program where we student teach, but it's disconnected from our grow your own program. And I, I want us to basically see if we can start farming our own teachers. And then they leave us for a year to get the, the small amount of college that they didn't get in our CTE program, and they come back and start. You know, and that kind of goes, it creates kind of what we were thinking about it, Texas Teach Residency Partnership Program, uh, which is kind of in those same, that same frame of mind. And it also has some grants that are involved in it that will help you do exactly that, increase people to get into the teaching profession. I always think of, uh, Kirsten, Kirsten graduated Lamisa and all she needed because of her coursework, correct me if I'm wrong Stacy, she could have gone away for one year and come back a fully certified teacher, because we had her so far prepared. We just need to make sure that there's not a disconnect, our kids get this and they don't know, all I gotta do is go get that, I'm gonna come back and teach. We need to advertise it and make sure it's known. There is a bad thing in that bill that I can promise you, whoever passed it has never taught in their life. Do I have any classroom teachers? Ms. Ranford, please close your ears. It prohibits, this is crazy, school administrators from returning a student to a classroom which a teacher has removed the student for behavioral reasons. Um, so what that's saying is if I sit like this and it was bothering Ernest Ojeda and he was my teacher, Ernest Ojeda could kick me out of my class and he don't have to have any record of where I go and he don't have to tell anybody where I went. That's a bad idea. Uh, there needs to be some kind of at least provision where they have to notify an assistant principal that that student has left the class. And they are trying to make life easier on teachers, but they have to understand when that student leaves their class, we are still responsible for that student. And so that is a little scary to me. And then the last thing I'll talk about, and I said it last time, House Bill 31 is the one I hope does pass the most, cause it's the one I told you changes funding from based on attendance to enrollment. So instead of getting per kid enrollment wise, we would get it, I mean, I'm sorry, attendance, we would get it for what we actually have enrolled in Lamisa ISD. Uh, guys, we are on, one of only six states in the United States that still does it based off of attendance. Everybody else does enrollment. And, uh, it would help, the amount of funding all schools lose because of it is astronomical. So if that changes, that's a big help for, for us. Any questions over the legislative stuff? I'll keep you posted, I know it gets weird, it's real interesting to me, but I'll keep you posted on it. And then the last thing on my May board meeting, um, I have now recommend to move from May 18th to May 25th, May 25th, May 25th, because of this, that is the week of graduation. So if you look at that week, we've got banquets on May 18th, we actually have the Success Academy graduation. On May 19th, we have a regular graduation. But we also learned beforehand, Mr. McBee told me, the Purdue and Branch attorneys could come on May 25th and give us an update on where we are with our property tax appeal. They can't come on the 18th. So check your calendars and if we can bump that to the 25th, I think it would benefit all of us a lot. And it would also allow you guys, a, a few of y'all came to the LSAD deal last, and I, I think it's awesome if you come. And it frees you up that night. You know, so I'll get you all those details. So May 25th, we're good. We'll leave the June and July ones on the, on the third Thursday, it'd be June 15th and July 20th. And then we'll probably have to have some special ones, the candidacy election, and then we'll look at some board training in there at some point, once we get the new board. Questions on any of that? Before I'm done on my part, you may or may not have an attachment, I emailed it to you, the Prom Day 5K. Trey, you're an athlete, let's go. You know, April, you said you're hosting a volleyball tournament? You need to, you need to start getting in shape a little on May 6th. Y'all know I'm trying to take the seniors on a trip. And this started with senior serve way back in the day, and I'm still wanting to do it, and we're gonna do it. We could use a little more money and I, I'm always about tiny fitness. So I thought on prom, we have a theme that night, masquerade. And if you run 5Ks, one of the cool things about it is you can have themes. And so we're gonna have a masquerade, Prom Day 5K, whatever the theme is of the prom that morning, walk, run, crawl, 5K. All of them have to do it. Ms. Ranford's already putting it in her phone, I see her. It's May 6th, Saturday morning, yes, ma'am. So that day would be that, and then it would be board elections, and then it would be prom. It'd be a busy day, but a fun day. So just put that in your, in your calendar. You get a free t-shirt and a little, and a little workout. Dr. Nelson will be there, right? And a hamburger, with that grill, maybe we'll have that hamburger. The winner? Right now, you're probably gonna get a big hug, but I'm working on getting a medal and a play. You planning on winning? He's in. I think that's all I had on my report. Thank you, guys. Questions for me on any of this?
Okay, I guess now we'll go to the action items. A deliberation and possible action to approve a request for additional state aid for add melon tax credit for the Mesquite Creek Wind Project.
This is something you guys probably know more about than me, I've researched it. Y'all have been approving this since 2016. Um, it is something, Ms. Gonzalez, that you and I just both have to sign. Um, and it happens twice a year, there's something they do in the fall. And then, and then the spring, they get the receipts, tax statements and copy of the check that was paid to make sure the tax credit was taken off the company's bill. And we just have to get this one back to T E A.
I'll make a motion, we approve as presented.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Deliberation and possible action to approve school calendar 2023-24.
Uh, it's, it's identical to what I presented to you guys that night in executive session. You know, I, I think you use the system as it, as it lies, it could completely change next year. And if it does, we, we will reverse course. And I may have a whole different idea of what's best for our students next year. But, you know, I've, I've kind of talked y'all through why I think this is a good thing for us this year. And so I'm presenting it just like it was that night.
I move that we approve the school calendar for 2023-24, as presented.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Deliberation and possible action to approve food service contract with Airmark.
This is for renewal, uh, for the 23-24 year. And it's been approved already by the Texas Department of Medical Culture. And we, of course, we, uh, the services will remain the same for the, for the next year. So we, we would like for that to be considered.
I make a motion, we approve Airmark for 2023-24, as presented.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Ms. Gonzalez, could I compliment Airmark one time? Because guys, uh, there's a program called All Pro Dads. Uh, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes. Uh, Joyce Trevino, I'm the district manager, so I'm just here to support Gary, so thank y'all.
And Gary's our guy and we love Gary, he's awesome.
He do a great job.
All this stuff, every, every board member. There's a program called All Pro Dads that they're gonna help me get off the ground next year. And I've kind of talked about it and every, it will benefit all of, oh, it, it's built to get Melrose models in, uh, low socioeconomic communities back involved in the schools. And they'll, they're gonna help me host breakfasts, uh, around six to eight times per year. But we'll have speakers and, and just get, get the community involved. And they're helping me with that, so I appreciate it greatly.
Next deliberation and possible action to approve property casualty alliance of Texas, which is called P C F.
That, that's just a form that needs signature annually for me, or not annually, but for me to be, uh, the agent to represent the school for our insurance suite.
Make a motion to have heard this presented?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Deliberation and possible action to approve FFI local policy. Deliberation and possible action to approve FFI local policy.
Um, I, I, I sent this to y'all over the weekend. Um, I touched on it at the last board meeting, uh somehow it, it got pulled out. I've gone through it tooth and nail from a principal standpoint cuz really that's who it would affect. And it's a response to any kind of bullying, cyberbullying, regular bullying that we were used to growing up. Uh, I, I think it's, I think it guides you really well and I would just like to go ahead and approve it and get it put back, back in there.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. The next one is deliberation and possible action to approve DCE local policy.
This is exactly what Dr. Nelson was doing earlier, yes ma'am.
The one we're hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the list of recommended contract renewals as presented by LISD administration with the exceptions of those on the excluded list below for reasons defined by administration.
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next is deliberation and possible action to approve the list of positions applicable, DCE local policy.
And Dr. Nelson said it earlier, but something um about that, is that list, we'll bring it back to you every year. You know, it's not, this isn't, right, Dr. Nelson, we talked about that, like, if, if y'all wanna revisit that next year, we'll look, you may need to take some off. But uh, you know, that, and, and I kinda supplied you with who it was. But it's, it's a, it's a fluid thing, uh, you know?
And then we'll get a monthly hire, I mean, whenever we do hire somebody?
Yes, ma'am, every month.
Thank you.
It might be a month, a half.
Oh, that's fine.
Like in February, it might be for January, but I, I'll make it as up to date as I can.
Okay, that will, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Deliberation and possible action to approve recommended contract renewals.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Now we're going to go to the executive session, consider and discuss personnel Texas government code, section 551.074. The time now is 7:55. And we are coming back into open session. There being no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned at 7:55.